My local supporter, the Southborough School Committee, open meeting on Monday, October 7th, 2019. And the first item on the agenda is audience sharing. Anybody have anything they would like to share? Okay, so then we'll move on to new business. The first item is the MASC/MASS joint conference and review of resolutions.
So the number six through the ninth at MASC/MASS joint conference. It's a great opportunity to network with other school committees and superintendents to hear what's going on in terms of educational landscape. And each year, they also vote resolutions. So in your packet are the nine resolutions that were brought forward this year. Two, I thought were, several noteworthy, two I thought were particularly noteworthy. The first one is Resolution 1 banning polystyrene from schools. I know there's been a lot of student support in terms of banning plastic and making sure that our cafeterias are as green as possible. And I know in Northborough, this was voted in that town meeting as well. So Northborough School and regions ban polystyrene. So this would be Resolution 10 across the Commonwealth. And then the other resolution that I thought was noteworthy was Resolution 3, which is school transportation. Basically, this, there's a master no law, Chapter 71, Section 7(c), does not allow districts to create their own transportation services in collaboration with other districts. So we could fire buses and have our own transportation, but we could not collaborate with the region or Northborough. So really protects bus contractors from competition. And this actually, this resolution talks about removing that law to provide greater competition. So for example, LACD collaborative could get into the transportation district if they so choose jobs and offer their metro services. So I think around the Commonwealth, there's been a lack of competition in transportation services. And this resolution speaks to trying to make it more competitive and hold transportation contractors to a higher level of service. So those were the two that were noteworthy. And then if we have a person from the Southborough School Committee attending the conference, we want to vote a delegate. So we attend the delegation meeting on November 8th, 2:00, to weigh in on the resolutions. There have been prior years we've not had a delegate. As we know, resolutions are just after resolutions and take quite some time to actually move the legislation. So if we don't have a member there, it's not the end of the world. There's still time to engage in this work. But if we do have someone to attend, it's always nice to have a representative there. So I'm not sure if anyone is paying in attendance. If you want to vote a delegate for Northborough or...
I'm currently unable to attend, but I am still looking at my schedule. But I don't know if anyone else...
Pretty helpful. See, I'm not able to attend.
Okay.
So we should probably vote Jessica as the delegate.
Yeah. Exactly.
That'd be the will committee. I'm not making that up. So we'll hold on to this.
We'll hold on to that, yeah.
Changes we can always speak for.
Okay. All right, so we have Legislative Update.
So there's been a lot of communications that were, I'm receiving, I'm sure you are as well, around the Student Education Opportunity Act. And it basically reforms the education funding form of Chapter 70 that was authorized in 1993. And there are some significant changes. It adds $1.4 billion of increased funding over a seven-year period. And it's more accurate accounting of estimates of the school district's employee and like child health benefits. It also looks at the reimbursing for transportation costs with circuit breaker. And it also increases MSBA's fund $150 billion to $750 billion. Increases opportunities for schools to engage in building projects. So it's still a lot of debate and conversation. And I think that we'll have to watch this carefully to see how it's going to impact the Commonwealth.
Do we have any initial estimate on that?
So there have been some estimates that people have warned us not to use, but it looks like, I think we would see an increase in circuit breaker because of transportation reimbursement. And I also think that we would see a benefit, an increase in terms of circuit breaker because their estimates of actual numbers of special ed students in our district is at 3.75 percent and theory numbers 4 percent. We'd see an increase in that. But in the overall of Chapter 70 funding formula, I don't see that towns like Southborough will see a significant increase. It's really about providing equity to communities right up in our Commonwealth. So it's not going to be for... More information at the office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then next is old business. First is the 2019-2020 Subcommittee on Liaison Assignments. And I did hear about one change that's been requested, which is that Mr. Challen would like to be the NSPAC liaison. You can change that. I don't know of any other changes, so...
Do you have other, I'm not sure if there's a TBD for Strategic Planning Committee? So would the work everyone embarked on strategic planning like be something that we identify under the circuit?
Okay. Is that work starting soon? So we should identify the person now?
It's going to launch in November. So we have some time to decide who wants to serve that.
Okay. All right, so we'll see if anybody...
We'll look at music.
Music K-12 Study Committee. Also, if a representative comes out, we'll sort them out.
When does it kick off?
Next Thursday, not this Thursday.
I have an interest in doing it. Give me a second.
I mentioned to you that I have some interest in that. It's next Thursday?
Yes. I can send you a do...
Can you send? How would we do this if we don't vote someone, but still have an interest?
Either chair or turn.
We don't vote on this anymore. So we could always just reschedule if we needed to.
Let me see. I do have an interest in that. Let me see. I'm not sure if it works this room away from here, but still.
Okay.
If you could send me something, that would be swell. Thank you.
Okay. That's it on that. And then next is Seal of Bilinguality and K-12 World Language Update.
So RotoWeb will give a presentation on Seal of Bilinguality combined with the K-12 World Language Updates. Last October, the school committee presented the work of the K-12 World Language Study. And we'll give you an update on some of the work that we've done since we last presented. And looking forward, looking ahead to where we hope to go forward with the work.
Okay.
We would like to give you an update, like Rick said, about the World Language Study Group. Just as a reminder, the World Language Study Group met in 2017 and 2018. And the outcome of the study group was that we examined the research, explored programs, trends, and approaches in other districts, K through 12. We also assessed our current programs in our district, K through 12. The findings were presented to Superintendent Johnson, and the findings were also shared here with school committee. The updates that have followed, the work continued after the study group presented its findings. And we have continued the work to implement the Seal of Bilinguality at the high school level. Our language, world language teachers continue to coordinate their programs in grades 6 through 12. We also developed a program assessment protocol called the STAMP. And I'll come back and explain what that assessment is about in just a couple of minutes. We identified auditory implications for the next steps that we would like to see happen in Southborough. And we also be scheduling visits to further explore language programs at the elementary level. So at this time, what is the Seal of Bilinguality? So I will be addressing three questions. What it is, why would we, why are we interested in implementing it, and who actually awards the seal? So the Seal of Bilinguality is an award given by the school of the district, and in our case, it would be by Algonquin Regional High School, to recognize students who have attained a high functional level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in two or more languages by high school graduation. It is actually an insignia that goes on the student's diploma. Why would we, why do we want to offer the Seal of Bilinguality? The state of Massachusetts adopted this, so now it is the state's seal of bilinguality. Our state adopted it in 2018. Well, actually, because this encourages our students to pursue bilinguality, it just honors the levels of proficiency that our students achieve in learning more than one language. It is definitely attractive to future employers. College admissions are also now finding out what the Seal of Bilinguality is about and paying attention to it. And it is definitely viewed as an asset for our students. So it does, it is an important question to ask, why do we want our students learning a second language? Well, to be able to thrive in the 21st century, it is important that our students learn more than one language. And it gives them an understanding of a complex, diverse world that we live in and how to understand different cultures and the languages that those cultures represent. And it also, we know by research, and we'll be talking a little bit of the research, that it does have definitely becoming bilinguality in a second language has long-term cognitive, cultural, and economic benefits to our students. If we look at what is happening in the world, it is a great benefit to understand and to be able to communicate in someone else's language and to understand different points of views and perspectives different from our own. Also, the study of languages and cultures, there is research supporting this, that students are able to think critically and creatively. It increases those skills. And it also gives the ability to understand and adjust to a very quickly changing world that seems to be becoming smaller and smaller, to be able to compete in a global way as well. That would be probably from the business perspective, from the personal perspective, it would definitely have the benefits of being able to relate to many more people from different languages and cultures. Just a little bit of research from what's coming from the business world. This is a survey, although it's not very current. I think there is a trend within the United States to see the human resource managers saying that, oops, excuse me for that, that in hiring decisions, 42 percent of businesses said that they would definitely consider a bilingual candidate. And in considering retaining employees, they would definitely, at 66 percent, consider retaining an employee who is bilingual rather than monolingual. And another survey, again, employers do prefer to look at, given that all other qualifications are equal, they do see the benefits of hiring a bilingual employee over a monolingual speaker. So those are the benefits for the business world. And as we think of our students as they graduate and go into the various careers, there is a need for bilingual speakers. So why do we want to implement the Seal of Bilinguality in our district? Well, to promote the learning of languages in addition to English. It would definitely encourage enrollment in our language programs, starting at the middle school level all the way through high school until graduation. It definitely, as we become more diverse as communities, and we've been reporting on our diversity in languages in our communities over the years, it definitely acknowledges the need for more bilingual speakers. But it also helps our students as they understand each other and understand speakers in different parts of the world. And as we said before, prepares them for 21st century skills that will help them in their future lives. So just a little bit more to support the purpose and rationale. It helps strengthen also our world language programming. The focus is on proficiency development, not just the reading and writing of languages. We are validating that diversity that exists in our communities nowadays. It is preparing our students for their future lives, and it is definitely strengthening interpersonal relationships and honoring the multiple cultures that are present in our communities today. So who awards the Seal of Bilinguality? So it's a multi, we've been planning for this over the years. It is a multi-year implementation. Last spring, our students at Tradiu in grade 8 took an assessment for language proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing to set a baseline, to see where our students were as they were ending grade 8 at Tradiu Middle School. That baseline assessment was shared with Algonquin. And the second step to the multi-year plan is to implement the Seal of Bilinguality in grade 11 this spring at Algonquin Regional High School. The assessment that we have chosen, the Department of Education provides the districts the choice of which assessments, but they have selected the assessments ahead of time is a STAMP assessment.
RotoCommittee Central.
Absolutely.
So when we were actually looking, investigating the Seal of Bilinguality, there were three pathways, so the elementary pathway, middle school pathway, and a high school pathway? Hartman Elementary Secondary Education actually made it one pathway at the high school level. But during our research of the Seal of Bilinguality, we actually came together as a 6 through 12 team, and we had a lot of great conversations. So the outcome of the Seal of Bilinguality at the high school level is really for us and for future 6 through 12 members of the team.
So the learning starts years ahead of actually being able to earn the seal. So there is criteria to earn the seal by high school graduation. All graduation requirements need to be met. And the seal award has two requirements, additional requirements. So in a foreign language, a student needs to achieve an intermediate high level on the assessment that I have mentioned, as well as having met expectations on their MCAS ELA in grade 10. Actually, some of our students might qualify to earn the seal award with distinction, which is achieving the advanced low level on the language proficiency assessment, as well as it exceeds expectations on their MCAS ELA in grade 10. The assessment that we have, that we piloted and we tried at a Tradiu Middle School last spring is called a STAMP assessment, which stands for Standards-Based Measurement of Proficiency. And that gave good information to our world language teachers to know the baseline, pleased with results, and to see where our students were in listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and to also identify the next steps to work on improving our already very good language, world language programs. So the recommendations moving forward. For next year, the recommendation is a year of language study at grade 6 at Tradiu Middle School in Spanish and French. Also, a second recommendation is to look into an exploratory language study at grade 5 in Spanish and French for the following year, FY '22. And during next school year, to look at models, possible models for exploring a language in pre-Case in grade 5 and make a recommendation for the school committee by the end of the school year. And that concludes the presentation.
One question. The words bilingual and bilingual, are they interchangeable? Or does one and the other have a more narrow scope?
They are. Bilingual is clarifying that a person can also read and write in a language. Bilingual is all-encompassing, but then when you say bilingual, it really means that the person can also read and write.
Okay, so it's assumed that you're bilingual, but bilingual, that you can speak. Any interest?
Yes.
So I have a slightly outside question.
Go ahead.
Well, so the, so the, under recommendations, so the difference between the recommendations and what we do now would be that currently in grade 6, they do half year of French, half year of Spanish. So then they would choose a language at the beginning of the year and then just do that one. Okay. And then how, is there a vision yet about how the exploratory language study in grade 5 would be incorporated into the school year? Or are we still sort of open on that?
We're still researching.
Yeah.
And I think our thinking was that in grade 6 right now, it's exploratory in terms of students are getting experiences, either French or Spanish throughout the year. We'd actually shift that down to fifth and potentially fourth grade so they're gaining those experiences when they're deciding on what language to select in sixth grade that has some background knowledge.
Yeah.
But also creates some opportunities for, you know, to teach cultural responsive understanding and learn about different cultures as well.
To me, that makes a lot of sense to have sort of a full year of language at grade 6, because then you're really taking advantage of the full year and progressing in whatever the chosen language is. I think that sounds great.
So does that mean they would start high school at year 3 instead of 2?
Potentially, they would accelerate their learning. And I think one of the great opportunities we now have with baseline data, we now can look at, okay, well, how, you know, another, what increased opportunities at grade 6 impact students entering our classes.
So the STAMP measurement of using grade 8, is there another version of that from grade 11?
No, it's an adaptive test. So it just gives a different level of language proficiency.
So it's the same test?
It's the same test, but the students would achieve higher levels of language proficiency.
And it's adaptive, so the students are taking assessment apps to see how students are responding. And then either it's more difficult or easier.
So the current juniors know about this yet?
They will be finding out.
We don't want to have them celebrate too soon.
So do we get certified as a district as able to sort of administer these assessments? Or is it just as long as we administer the prescribed assessments that we can steal?
Exactly. There were a couple pathways that you could select and a couple of assessments that they recommended in the STAMP. Part of the research and study within 6 through 12 educators focused on which assessment would actually yield the best of it. And also, it announces a baseline to see, to make sure that no matter where our students are being educated, whether it's Northborough, Southborough, there's a consistent efficiency level of students entering the crowd.
Okay. Thank you.
Any idea how many other states have something like this?
Many other states have.
Yeah.
Yes, the number has been increasing. The first time I looked, it had been over 20 states. Yes. So now, our Commonwealth has adopted it, so now the Department of Education has set guidelines. And they're also want to know what students achieve this state's eligibility.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so next, Master Plan Committee Update.
Excuse me. Two things, really. So if the committee would like to thank schools and principals of the way, I'm going to make available, I believe it's cafeteria on November 7th for the PC to have, I guess I'm going to call a Southborough Visioning Forum. And that's really, that really has two goals. First, and not necessarily in particular order, but I think most people in town probably aren't even aware that this project is going on. This occurs with many of the projects, you know, in town. So part of the, part of the benefit is to promote some awareness, not really of the committee, but really of the project and the process that's going on. The second reason is to actually get input from town citizens. It's a way near the consulting firm that we're working with through a grant, as I understand it. I think has some pretty clever ideas about how to get, you know, get folks to participate and provide input. You know, committees can sit in their, in their meeting rooms and come up with ideas, but a lot of good ideas actually come from outside that if you can, if you can find a mechanism, you know, to promote, to get a hold of the ideas. So I think that's the, that's the main item that I think I can, you know, I can communicate to folks here. Each, I'm going to call it functional area, that's probably incorrect, but of the plan, the functional area being one of the areas that are kind of being moved forward if possible for this master plan and tied together. One of them is schools. But each of these areas have a subgroup, which might be one, two, three folks, that are really working through, working through the details on what's going to be a part of that. And for some strange reason, on that subgroup. But Sam is also on the subgroup. We're going to have someone else. So I think we're going to want to see if we can schedule some time with the chair and the superintendent before we go ahead and try to present our brilliant ideas, you know, right to the committee. So we'll be reaching out to see if we can find a spot on your calendars to do that. It won't be for the next week and a half, I can tell you that, but... It won't be for the next week and a half, I can tell you that, but sometime after that. So, do you have any questions? It's exciting stuff, I know.
Just a comment that as we reauthorize our Vision 2020, the timing could be better.
Interesting, that's a fair point.
Engage in this conversation.
Yeah.
This actually provides us with great data as well.
That's a, that's a good one. Okay, that's all done.
Questions? All right, next is superintendent's report to the committee.
So in your packet are the October enrollments, so this is October, October enrollments, and I think we did add a row at the very bottom with the project, NASDAQ projections. And I'll just point out that NASDAQ projected our kindergarten enrollment to be 124, and we ended up with 140 students, so 16 more students, which is a significant increase from what they projected. Overall, we are, let's see, seven students above NASDAQ projections at this point in time, and we are six students above where we, where we launched this school year. So our variance on the, on the reverse side is six students, and all of our classes are within our size policy. And then next in your packet is the actual October 1 enrollment report, which, this is such, this is a very important number, as the state uses the October 1 enrollments to forecast and project budgetary numbers, chapter 70, and so forth. So our October 1 enrollment for Southboro was 1,284.
So I should be able to read as well the next person. So there's significant over responsibility in the kindergarten projection. There are only six over in total.
Yes.
Is there any, any major kind of variances the other way that sort of surprised anybody?
We had on third grade, we had seven less students than projected, so I don't think there was any significant surprises. We had a typical move in and move out.
Is that basically a move in and move out?
Yeah.
Is that true?
So about 16 students is significant.
Yeah, over 10%.
So I think in grade one, that plus three, grade two is minus one, grade three is minus seven, four is minus three, five is plus one, six minus two, seven minus one, and eight was minus one.
140 is a pretty big class.
And also, I think last year was our first year implementing tuition free kindergarten.
Yeah.
So we might recruit some families who otherwise might not have enrolled their students in K program.
All right. Okay.
So next on the superintendent's report is FY20 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report. Now, let that, can you speak to that?
So as you can see, there are no significant variances from last month. I can tell you that those actual expenditures compared to last year, we are about 10% of our operating budget, which was the same number we were at last year at this point in time. We have in covered as much as we possibly can, as much as we possibly know in terms of expenses that are coming up. The largest piece, obviously, being our salaries. And so based on those projections, we have about 5%, 5%, 4% of the budget remaining. So we are trending just as we were last year at this time. Yeah, I think we need a question to bring until August.
So I'll move it, we approved the fiscal year 20 budget. Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report for Southboro School District as of September 3rd, 2019, until the 3rd.
All right, discussion, all in favor?
So next in your packet is FY21 School Committee Budget Priority Document. So the budget priorities listed on here were moved forward from the FY20 budgeting process. So just a general discussion around budget priorities in our fiscal 21 budgets.
We can delete the tuition free kindergarten.
Yeah, that's, cross that out.
Done. So is this, this is open for discussion right now?
Yes.
Okay.
What is, is there a, a method to the sequence or no?
I don't think it's not prioritized.
It's not a prioritization, at least in my mind.
And it is that the Southboro principals and directors, we did meet to talk about some of the priorities for the fiscal year 21, and many of our priorities, the priorities that we discussed align with, align the bullets, or of them that came, or things like aligning our curriculum to the new history and social science framework, language, STEM, making sure that, you know, our capital investments are maintained properly. We also had a conversation around furniture for classrooms, and it sounds, it doesn't sound like it's directly connected to teaching and learning, but actually, you know, making sure that the furniture allows for collaborative workspaces similar to what is being piloted at Tradior School. It doesn't make sense. This is a little bit...
Yeah. So one of the things that, one of the challenges that we deal with in being a school system and trying to manage budget priorities is because these are all governed by the budget, and you can't do everything to the same degree of either involvement or intensity or success. And I don't remember having this discussion last year, you might have, but how do you kind of determine what to trade off when you get into that? So here we've got this list of, these are the budget priorities, but they're not all going to happen to the degree that everybody and some people would like to make them happen. So how does that work?
So I think we do engage in many conversations around, you know, what, what budget items, what programs of our downgrades impact the student level, what's going to have the greatest benefit in terms of student outcomes, and what's going to be the closest to what students experience. So that tends to be our, a high priority for us, you know, thinking about, obviously that has a huge implication in terms of the human resources and human capital that we invest in to work with our students, you know. And then we always look at what, what are one or two of the ideas that we're trying to move forward with, maybe not at a large scale, but in terms of a kind of a micro environment, so we can actually have a food concept. So that's some of the work that we do in terms of our thinking. And I know in the past, when, you know, there are always more ideas than dollars, it is a finite budget, but also thinking about communicating what the budget funds, what the budget does not, and making sure that it does not, that pool really speaks about innovation and future programming, so that, you know, the school committee go and understand what we're moving forward, but also as citizens in terms of what we're going to accomplish and develop. It's a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion. And I would say a priority that we have is, you know, what's going to have the greatest impact in terms of the student learning experience and student outcomes. I wonder if we should put something in here to get at that point, you know, encouraging innovation, something like that. Maybe add those bullets towards the end.
I'm looking at these items, and none of them seem to be unrelated to student, to student outcomes. So I heard you, but it seems you're still going to have to deal with trade-offs, and maybe even in, you know, within a school year, trade-offs, and maybe that something seems to, I don't know, things don't turn on a dime, you know, when it comes to schools, but several months down the road, you might look at things differently. And that's basically your, that's, the discussions are really what keeps that alive and moving and...
I mean, I think that, to your point, the budget process is September, October, November, December, you know, when we get into developing implement areas, so a lot of the conversations are on what are our priorities, or do we want to see move forward in the budget, those conversations are happening. I also think the first bullet, very important bullet, were, were at a place where the Vision 2020 is sunsetting, and I think that plan has really driven a lot of the budget priorities for us. So I think after we go through the strategic planning process and reauthorize that, and I also think it will give us some great language and some great direction of what we want to have in the future.
So to me, I, I feel like these bullets still represent a solid touchstone for going through the budgeting process. I, it, to me, it's sort of, unless we have some sort of really significant fiscal commitment that we're trying to reach, like transitioning to tuition free kindergarten, you know, the rest of it, it leaves some flexibility for, you know, maintaining these, keeping these things in mind as we go through the process, but also having the flexibility to say, this actually, we're going to prioritize, you know, with the discussion with all the relevant people there, you know, we're going to prioritize this over that, and without having to tie ourselves down to any specifics. And I, I mean, I, I feel that this represents a good selection of things to keep in mind, I, but, you know, I'm also open to having other things in there, but I, I think it's a pretty nice summary of the things that are relevant.
I agree with you about, about the summary part. Do you think it's a good thing not to be tied down to specifics? Maybe.
Well, I don't know how we could do that so early in the process, really. I mean, that's, that's the thing.
I was kind of behind, like, comment on mid-year transition.
Yeah.
Like, the kindergarten thing, we did that.
Right.
When we needed to.
Right.
Something like that comes up.
And that was a known large item, maybe that's why.
I don't see any one of these other items sort of being as discreet, if you will, maybe.
Yes, yeah.
That's the word, as sort of the, you know, get your hands around, you know, this is what we want to make happen, there's an endpoint, if you will. None of these things don't end.
Yeah.
They may move relative to each other.
I think your, your comment around, should we have innovation in here, I think that is, I think that is important. I think weaving, potentially weaving it into the third bullet, the quarter might fit nicely.
The funding bullet as far as the...
Yeah, sure, I could recommend to adopt.
I mean, the nice thing about the kindergarten, tuition for kindergarten is, you know, the goal, everybody could sit back and say, you don't get it. It's just harder to do.
Right.
You know, some of the other bullets.
But I think with, with a strategic plan, with action items and benchmarks, we'll be able to report out, we'll be able to take a bullet and say, okay, these are all of the action items that fall under that critical, here's where we are in terms of, or, or that larger. In the absence of having those specific action items, it does feel a bit...
And I'm not even saying that it'd be a good thing to have nothing but, you know, bullets that, you know, you can say, well, I finished that one, and now, you know, it's just, I don't think the priorities necessarily know led themselves to that kind of thinking, but... What about the last one, establishing a multi-year technology cycle? Haven't we kind of done that?
Yeah.
Could change that to maintain, maintaining a multi-year?
Maintain the maintenance. So under three, you would add innovation, something like 21st century skills into innovative teaching and learning experiences, or ensure, how would, how would that go? I don't know if we're voting on this tonight, we need to...
I think it's more of a discussion, or is it a vote?
I think we can bring it back at a, at a, and I don't think these are going to trust which change the direction of the work that we're doing in FY21 budget process.
Could be simple, it's to adopt an integrated innovative 21st century skill.
Yeah.
Okay, we should probably get a button, see if Jessica has it.
Sure, that sounds good. All right, thank you.
So next in your packet is the FY21 budget calendar, and the only, the new date that has been added was on 9/23, we had building tours. I'd like to thank Clayton and Steve for giving tour at Woodward and Fin School. It was a great opportunity to talk about our facilities and talk about the future of our facilities, so, thank you.
Cleanest boiler rooms I've ever seen. It's sparkling. Okay, what's about that? Okay, so then we have educational policy, then at this time, and then policy development and distribution, dissertation and observation policy. This is just distribution.
Distribution.
Okay, so we have, we all have this now. All right, next is personnel items, personnel report.
So one appointment and one retirement, and principal of the boy will share this, share more information about this retirement at an upcoming meeting.
That complete?
All right. Or if you want to share now?
No, you can wait.
All right. Okay, and then next we have Communications Distribution of School Improvement Plan Presentation Schedule.
So Steve, will she be at the next one?
Great. Action on minutes, where you, where you staff the minutes. Did you have a question on that?
No, I'm sorry, one more.
These are fine to make, and then we have the rest of the...
It's an executive session. So the executive session, that's where we'll vote.
Okay. I approve that we approved the meeting minutes of the Southboro School Committee Special Open Meeting of Wednesday, September 11th, as well as the Southboro School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, September 11th.
Second.
Wait. Did you say open meeting twice?
Oh, yeah, the special.
The special, okay. Regular meeting, regular.
Okay, segmented by Jen. Any discussion? All in favor? Great.
I approve and retain the minutes for the...
I'll move that we approve and retain the minutes for Southboro School Committee Executive Session of Wednesday, September 11th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, those are P rolls. That will be coming. And then agenda items for next month. Looks like we have Woodward School Improvement Plan up to eight.
Just to have that and pass presentation.
Oh, great. Okay, then that takes us to our second audience sharing. Anybody has anything to share? And then we have an executive session. We need a roll call vote to the executive session.
I'll move that we move to executive sessions to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intention of returning to open meeting.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.